Starting. Thank you. Good evening. Today is July 24th, 2023. It is about 6:04 and we are the Groton Board of Education and it's our regular meeting. And our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Dan, would you be willing to lead us? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let me just give the board a little bit of a lay of the land because I'm actually going to propose a motion at this moment, which is, wow, my voice is really low. I'm getting a lot of feedback. No, I'm pretty good. All right. Thank you. So we're going to have the regular board meeting and then we are going to have a focus group. But we have people who are here to present. If you all could look at our new, under New Business Number Two, we have people who are here and my understanding is that they are very hungry and they would love to be able to talk about their trip and have us vote on it. But I am actually just wondering if, so the board, I'm actually wondering, wondering two things. Can we just, I would ask, I could get a motion to move Number Two, under New Business, to right now? Or we could just ask for a discussion and wait on it, but I think I would just prefer to do the whole thing. And so in order to move a schedule, or excuse me, a scheduled agenda, I just have to have a motion and second and a vote.
Motion.
So I have a motion from William to move, under New Business Number Two. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain that motion has carried? So, I am wondering if you guys would love to come up to the podium and talk about this. But first, what I am going to do is I'm going to read the motion and I just need to have it seconded. So it is to approve the hiking, come on up, to approve the hiking club's field trip request to the White Mountains, New Hampshire, scheduled for May 22nd, 2024 through May 25th, 2024. Can I have a second? We're now up for discussion. And that, that's you.
So I usually come and present, I've got different things, but I just put in our requests this year, thought I'd show up, be able to answer any questions, brought along a guest. This is potentially our new chef for next year. The best thing that I heard today so far, when you said you needed a vote to move it up, I heard him go, aye? So, so he was helping you out.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
So what we're really looking to request, the same trip that we always do, go to New Hampshire in May. The schedule is the same. We haven't planned most of the smaller trips yet. We'll do that earlier in the fall and then-
Could you do me a favor?
Sure.
Could you please, though, there are some of us who have voted on this hiking trip before, some of us have not, and if there's anyone who's going to be listening or watching this, it would be really nice for you to give a little bit background on the hiking club.
Sure. So we've been doing this for about 15 years. And essentially what we do is we stay every Friday afternoon and we play some games and we talk about camping, we practice packing bags, we do all kinds of different things like that, do a bunch of team building. Do you have any team building that you liked? No, apparently not. All right, so we're just going to move right on. We practice hikes about once a month throughout the course of the year, including the winter if we can go out. And the culminating trip at the end of the year is always to New Hampshire. We've been doing that for probably, I don't know, 10 years or more, maybe more than that, something like that. It's been quite a while, but that's the last trip. We're gone for three nights and four days. We always stay in a cabin up there and we hike around. That's essentially what we do. We hike and we play. That's what we do. It's a good, it's a good learning experience. So, did you like that trip? What do you want to add? Do you want to present? I can go now.
No.
Okay. Do you want to say something that you liked? You guys talk.
How many years have you been on the hiking trip?
Yeah. How many years have you been in?
One.
One. What was your best experience that was on the hiking trip?
Yes.
The rock playground.
You, you rock climbed?
The rock playground.
The rock-
A rock playground, yes. So essentially, it was a bunch of rocks that had come off the mountain back when the ice pulled it all off and they were able to go in and around and play in them. And it was right beside our cabin. So, we called it a rock playground. That's not actually a name. We just, we named it. We named it. Doesn't that surprise you? It doesn't surprise you, does it? Yes. Many had fun on that.
So you may be the chef for this coming trip? What's your favorite thing to cook over a campfire?
How about over the grill?
Over the grill?
Jalapeno poppers.
Speak, you speak.
Jalapeno poppers.
Jalapeno poppers?
Yep.
My goodness. That sounds really good to me.
Perhaps when you report on the trip, you bring some jalapeno poppers for the board. Maybe we'll make it a three-month trip.
So he made them for everybody. So, cut the jalapeno in half, stuffed it with cream cheese, wrap it in bacon, and he grilled it.
Wow, that is really cool.
Very cool.
That is really cool.
So that's where we are. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
I do. Andrea?
When I looked at this, it says that you're going to use this in all these classes, but in particular, I was interested in, in language arts and how you're going to do writing from this.
How we're going to do writing from it?
Yeah.
So we happen to do some writing when they apply. We, we put out a little application. We changed it and made it online last year. So we sent them out and had them respond to questions and things like that about websites that we sent them to. So we had them go visit the hut that we were going to, had a couple of questions that they had to answer, and then, you know, we do it that way.
Do you do any composition after they've come back from the trip?
Uh, no, we, usually we don't. We do a lot of verbal stuff, but we don't do any writing when we come back.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the board? Bev, I'm sorry.
Oh, I see your hand.
Okay, that's okay. $100, that's pretty cheap and so that's good. I'm glad you kept the cost down. When do you start planning, when do you start fundraising for the trip? And what's the total price of the trip? Did I miss that somewhere?
Uh, I think it's on the form and I don't remember what, I don't remember what the total is off the top of my head. The, the $100 is actually stuff that families buy and then they keep. So they have to buy boots, they have to buy socks, they have to buy rain gear, certain things that fit the kids individually. Those are the things that they purchase and then everything else, we start with fundraising. Jen Sim has helped us since I've been at Fitch Middle, run volleyball tournaments and that brings in a lot of the money to help offset other things. Ms. Austin helps with transportation, which is a big piece of it. And other than that, a lot of the stuff that we have, we've just replaced as we go, as something gets broken. We did have, we've paired with the Navy this year. The GOATS is one of the, it's a gym and they raised a little over 2,000 for us. And we got 10 new back, no, 10 new tents, six new backpacks and some real nice equipment that they, they helped us with because some of our stuff was falling apart. So, try and keep it as cheap on the families as possible.
Has this carried over to any of the other elementary schools? Because this started at Fitch Middle School from that, is that correct?
Yes.
Where you started at Fitch?
Yep, it was Fitch.
Has it carried over?
Uh, it did. It did at one point. There were a couple of people that did it at Westside and I think, I think Ben Moon does something at CK, not to this extent, but I think he does some hiking things over there. So it, it spreads.
And actually, Beverly, we have connected with GOSA, which is our community organization, and they will be planning next year for every single school to have a Saturday hike with the families of those schools. So we're really excited about getting the community interested in all the resources that are right here in Groton, from the Thames River to the Mystic River. And I just spoke with one of our partners at Ness who's partnering with Mystic River using their pond area and some of the resources that are right on the land at the schools to take advantage of. So I'm very excited.
Our club joined them for a hike a long time ago, one of the years. That was nice. It was a Saturday and it was all kinds of people showed up for it. It was a fun time.
Yeah.
Second, I'd also like to thank you for typing all the information. It was easy to read and have a great time.
I'm not going to write it. I have to type it.
Well, thank you for doing that.
William, did you have a question?
Just answered.
Any other questions? All right, let's go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion that's on the floor, which is to approve the hiking club's field trip request to the White Mountains, New Hampshire, scheduled for May 22nd, 2024 through May 25th, 2024. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those oppose? Absentions? Motion is carried. You guys are off to-
Thank you.
New Hampshire.
Off to dinner.
And then also off to dinner. Is that cool?
Yes, oh, we are. Thank you very much.
All right, bye-bye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, board. If we can go back to the second, I take it we do not have any visitors or delegations for tonight?
No.
Okay, so we are now on the comments from citizens. This is the portion of the agenda where the board welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. The board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and cannot respond during the committee of citizens, during the comments of citizens' portion of the board meeting. And citizens should make their presentation from the podium or if they're on the Zoom and state their names and addresses for the record. Ms. Drone, do you know of anyone that has signed up or said something in the chat?
Nobody's contacted me.
Okay. All right. And there's no one here? All right, we will move on. We do not have a student representative report. And do we have a sense about who our senior and junior representatives are going to be?
Yes. I don't have their names, but I was reassured that we have two juniors who are waiting in the wings.
I saw names over there.
And we have Zoe, of course.
Okay.
As a senior.
All right, we're moving on to the superintendent administrative reports and I am going to send them off to Susan.
Okay, so we will start with an update on communications. We have Dr. Clint Kennedy and Rebecca Bayes here to help us with some of the new initiatives that we're working on in communication, revitalizing our website and also revitalizing our parent communication, parent and student communication system with ParentSquare. So I'm going to turn it over to you all to fill us in.
Hi. So we've been talking a lot about communications, I think, the past couple of meetings, especially with the communications plan coming up for a vote. And we discussed it with Cal last week. And I know Clint did touch on the website and ParentSquare a couple of weeks ago. Those projects are very much still in the works. The website redesign is ongoing and we do have a new template for our website. And the motivation behind that was really to provide a better user experience across all of our school district sites as well as the district site, so that when families, particularly families with multiple students, when they go to our website, either the district site or the school site, have an easier time finding the information that they're looking for. And that it just is a bit more modern, a bit more sophisticated, allows us to better showcase all of the images and videos that we have as a district, lays out information so that it's easier to find, so they can get to what they're looking for. And that goes for the general community, parents, students, so we can, you know, highlight things better. For new residents looking at our district and the community who want to move here, our military population. So we're finalizing, the design template is really finalized. We're moving forward with cleaning up content that has been cloned over from our existing site and then adding new content and features. So for example, our new site shows a nice big header image and then there's icons beneath that that are callouts to some of the most frequently looked-for information. For example, board of ed information, food services, transportation, digital backpack. And then digital backpack leads into ParentSquare, which is really going to become sort of our digital backpack platform for parents as well as students eventually, subgroups within the district, athletics, extracurricular clubs. And it came up at our communications committee meeting about, you know, showing you all an example of how ParentSquare works. To the end user, ParentSquare doesn't feel much different than School Messenger in terms of if you get a phone call or a text or an email, you're still going to get a phone call, a text or an email, if that's what you desire. It's really in the features that makes it a much more improved communications system for us. Translation capabilities, which tells our families that are not English-speaking that it's important to us that we get the information about our district to them in a way that they can understand it. And that is very much just built in to the platform so that if a parent has indicated on their registration with us in Power School that they speak a different language, that that's going to pull over and the system is going to know to share the information with that family in that preferred language. What else? Yeah.
I think Rebecca did an excellent job of kind of giving us the, the big picture overview. Two things I'd like to call out. One, really these, both these pieces kind of play across our spectrum from fully public to fully private conversations. You know, a website traditionally being that public-facing piece for Groton Public Schools, whether you have children in the district, whether you're alumni, whether you're just a, a member of the community or hopefully a member who wants to become a member of our community at some point, all the way through ParentSquare, which really will come all the way down to those vital communications between a teacher and a parent or parents, communications within a school and so forth. So I'm, I'm really excited. We've had a chance to really modernize and, and really bring up to speed this entire stack from public to private to enhance and make more efficient communication. And all of this is really keeping in mind kind of what we found from a lot of the surveys that was done in the communications subcommittee around mobile first being one of those key trends that we're seeing. So, website is important and this new modernization of this allows it to, to be automatically reconfigured regardless of what device you're on, a desktop, a laptop, an iPad, a phone, what have you, all the way through ParentSquare, which has app, native apps that you can use to monitor, to get notifications, to set how often and how frequently you want to be notified and in what format and so forth. So, we're, we're really resetting the bar for all these things, doing them better, more modern, more efficiently. And we're, again, we're touching everything from that full public view all the way to these critical conversations internally. So, I'm excited. I'm ready to light the candle on these things and get them going, but I know we have five or six more weeks before we, we get back to school.
Well, we have been field testing and piloting.
Yeah.
So I worked with Joyce and we put out our first ParentSquare communication around the principal search. And that went pretty smoothly. We did do a backup School Messenger just to make sure that everybody got their message. But I'm excited about it. One of the things, Rebecca, you told me that I thought would be wonderful, is that if I have a child in elementary, middle school, high school, and I'm working and I don't want my messages until 6 o'clock at night, I can have them all come at the same time so I, I make sure I get all of them in my email, if that's what I prefer.
Right.
So parents have really control over how they want to receive their, their information. And I think that's pretty powerful.
It is, it is. And that's really important for us to understand how our audiences in the district want to receive information and for them to be able to self-select that a bit and, and for us to have a smart system in place that responds to that and feeds them the information in the way they need it and in the way they want it. And also, as Clint said, linking the website and ParentSquare together. We talked a little bit internally today about how ParentSquare actually doesn't encourage you to do too many attachments to emails and other documents. It encourages links to the website or other sources or putting it in something that's called posts, which is kind of like a social media feed, which is just another place where parents can see the information and scroll through. So it creates a really nice synergy between our website and directing people to our website as well as the ParentSquare platform. So, we're working on content and settings and things like that, both with the website and ParentSquare, making sure everybody's feeling really comfortable with both. Once mid-August comes, we'll be diving really heavy into testing all of that and making sure we're good to go for the launch of the school year. And I think parents are really going to appreciate and like some of these changes with our last communication survey, which was a bit ago, but we got a lot of feedback about communications, streamlining some things for parents. And when we did push out a first communication about ParentSquare earlier this summer, we did share with them that a lot of this is in response to what they told us. And I think that's called out in our communications plan in one of our strategies, that we want parents to understand that we're listening. When they give us feedback in surveys and information that they share with us, that we're listening to that information and we're using it to inform some of our decisions moving forward so that we can improve upon things. Back-to-school communications is huge right now, engaging our new families who are coming into the district with all of our resources and tools that we have, making sure our current families are up to speed and have all of the information they want, you know, everything from the food service menus to transportation routes. That all happens really the week leading up to school. We're very busy supporting HR with some of their, promoting some of their recruiting events coming up. There's going to be an article, an ad in the upcoming education guide in the day about jobs with Groton Public Schools and encouraging folks to apply for some of our current openings. We'll be engaging our families with our social media and our Facebook. We've had great success with our Facebook page and just keep steadily increasing that. So especially our new kindergarten families, new families into the district in other grades, we want to keep pulling them in. And then partnerships and being out in the community have been going well and a focus area for the coming year. We established a great partnership with the team over at Branford Manor this past spring and continue to work with them to do onsite events. And literally that came to fruition, just going into the building one day and sitting down and talking to them and forming a relationship and establishing a relationship with them. And then now we have a great dialogue back and forth about how we can be supporting and in touch with that community on a more grassroots level because Branford Manor, of course, has a huge student population right there. So like we stay in good contact with our military population and Miranda Chapman, our military liaison, you know, these other niche groups within our community, making sure that we're in touch with them. And then registration support is huge throughout the summer. We continually have new families coming into the district throughout the summer. So, supporting those families coming in and making sure they know how to register and get onboarded with our school district is important.
Summers are busy around here.
Summers are busy. And I think I said last week, communications is part of everything. So there's always a little layer to everything, that there's a little bit of a communications happening to support it on top of our major communications initiatives.
I'm sure that this is going out to like all the principals and like in their newsletters so that people can be more aware. I mean, like we can't reach every single person, but we're, we're doing that, right? Newsletters and stuff.
Yep, yep. The schools, all, a lot of them do their weekly updates, their newsletters. We did a district newsletter a couple of times this year and we're looking to increase that, the school matters. And we, we talked a bit earlier about wanting to increase our outreach to the broader and general community as well, as parents with some of those newsletters about the district happenings and things. But yes, even though we have a big focus on digital, we don't, we're not abandoning some of those traditional methods as well of reaching our community.
Can I, I'm old and not really all that savvy. What is a digital backpack?
A digital backpack is when you share information digitally versus a paper hard copy going into the student's backpack.
Like a flyers.
So flyers, instead of flyers being sent home or permission slips being sent home in a physical hard copy in the backpack, having it all in a digital version and all in one place where people would find it. So they would know to go to the digital backpack to find any sort of recent things. So that's really what ParentSquare is going to be for us.
Consider it as a quiver in which a variety of digital tools are available for communications.
A quiver?
A quiver. And if we have all of our arrows to shoot out good messages.
So you really are saying that I'm old, since I would absolutely know what a quiver is. Is that what you're telling me?
Well, you're younger than I.
Okay.
So it's a term you probably would see on a lot of, a lot of district websites. And I know at one of the early fall board of ed meetings or once we return back to school, we want to come in and really walk you through the new website and show you some of that as well as walk you through ParentSquare and what that looks like.
And, and ParentSquare ensures that a teacher to a family can, there's one mechanism for people to, to be in contact. So if I have, if I have seven children and they're all in different places with different teachers?
It, it does. That, it makes it much more efficient and searchable and parents can go back to things that they may have missed or if they're behind and they can go back and self-serve that. That being said, it does not replace necessarily a phone call or other means of traditional outreach if and when that's appropriate. So, we think this is better, more efficient for the larger communication tools we have, but that doesn't mean picking up a phone every once in a while as needed, judgment call by a principal, a teacher, what have you, that is certainly on the table as well.
And we still have Power School, which is really the engine behind all of our-
Exactly. The data gets fed from Power School. And the other thing is, we're not doing this blind. We just finished a year-long test using ParentSquare with one of our elementary schools and it went swimmingly. Most of the credit should go to the principal and the staff that really implemented it at Thames River. We learned a lot, which we're now feeding into the larger district rollout for this. So, thank you to them.
Yep. I'm going to recognize Bev.
Thank you, Kim. On our webpage, do we, do we have any like social services, information or health information?
Yeah, we are in the process of updating that. We have a, a new list of tools and resources and information. That's going to, that's being updated as part of the overall content update. There is some on there now, but it will be easier to find, more accessible and a more comprehensive list.
What kind of information are you talking about?
I'm talking about all of the things like food services, food lockers, other support, general supports that the community members might be seeking or needing.
Well, I, I just, I was watching a town council meeting last month and they had a referral about putting information on their website about substance abuse.
Yep, gas.
And where to go for that. We have that also?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And GASP is currently very prominent on our website and we share things that they put out as well in, via email and-
Facebook.
-social media, our Facebook page. So we have a good collaboration with them.
Thank you. Thank you for the information and thank you for your hard work.
Thanks.
Kim, do you have a question? Yeah, I have two questions. I'm excited about the multilingual capacity and I see that easily, relatively easily done with email and text. What about recorded messages? When the superintendent records a message, do we have a tool which allows for an interactive trans, automatic translation?
The, anyone who creates a voice message, because again, there's, there's four options. There's email, there's text, there's voice, and there's our posts that kind of, it's a, think of it as a Facebook post, if you will. The superintendent can go in, record, record her own voice if she wants, or she can paste text in to the voice box and a synthesized voice will actually read it in a voicemail message. And based on how we have our settings in Power School is what the, the home language is for those parents, then it will then do that. Now, it's not 130 some odd languages for the voice translation, although some of the text-based stuff will do that, but it, I think it's the top 30 or 40 spoken languages in the world. So, and they build on that over time, so.
That's, that's exciting.
Isn't that cool?
And it's one of the reasons that Rebecca has been working very hard on the website updates too, if I may, sorry. Where in modernizing and cleaning some of the aspects of our site, where she's helping make it far more accessible for some of the screen readers that can translate text on the fly to a different language possible. Many websites, including our own, often have different objects kind of hidden in there as PDFs or images which can, aren't accessible to be translated. It's one of the reasons you've been pushing and why I'm really excited about this new version as well. We do have that as translation, text-based translation tools built into this new version of the website. of the website.
I'm very excited and grateful. The second question was, do you think that we're going to need to offer training for parents to be able to use this system? And if so, will we be having multilingual training?
Yes, I do think we'll need to support parents who, it may not come as easily or may not be perhaps as tech savvy and we expect to have a presence at all of the back-to-school nights and also have a help page on the website, which again, is a digital platform, but making sure we push out information through the schools and that the principals are pushing out in those weekly updates and other methods of communication, how they can ask for support, perhaps having some help sessions up at central office for folks who need to come in. We've done that before for Power School Help. Last year, we established a Power School Help page on the website with a lot of resources, as well as a form and a Power School Help email. And that's been very successful in terms of parents who were struggling as they got onboarded with that. I think Parent Square is fairly intuitive and, and simple to begin using. And again, for parents who don't want to use the app, they don't need to do anything differently. They're still going to get texts, email, phone calls from us. They're not going to stop receiving any communications from us if they choose not to use the app or not create an account. That's just another layer and option for the parents who want it. But the parents who don't will continue to receive good communications from us. And we'll be able to track and really monitor and see metrics on how parents are receiving. We'll be able to see if they open emails, if they're reading texts, if they're answering the phone calls. So that will help us further improve our communications and our messaging moving forward.
I'm not sure how to operationally define cutting edge, but I think our families are going to experience something very, very close to that.
And, and again, with the, with the translation and accessibility, that has been very important to me, that we improve upon some of that with the tools we're using and our practices of how we're pushing out information. Because it really says to our community, we value you, when we're making sure that we share information in a way that everybody can access.
Thank you.
Who's maintaining the website?
It's really been a joint, so there's webmasters at each district and in each department, I'm sorry, in each school and in each department. And then there's a small team of us up at central office, but we're looking to streamline that. And we're streamlining what elements all of our different webmasters have access to. We're going more to a system where there's a module that people put information into and it pushes it out into a nice, pretty format that's very standardized versus having all of our webmasters constantly redesigning or trying to ad hoc make changes to our design templates. Because that's where we get into trouble.
I, I only say that because the concern is, is that we can create a really pretty website, but if we're not maintaining it.
Right.
On a regular basis, it doesn't mean anything.
Right.
So I'm glad to hear that you guys are doing that.
Yeah.
And could you get that part of the program to make me more pretty? Because that would be really swell.
You're just pretty as you are.
All right. So, is there any other questions? But thank you so much. You guys have done just amazing, amazing, amazing work for the, for our communication piece. If there's not any more questions, I'm going to move us on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm happy to report that our principal search for the new principal at Fitch High School is absolutely underway. I've been in communication with Dr. Mary Broderick from CADE and she had given us a timeline, which I've shared with the board, and we're really marching right along. Tomorrow is the first meeting of a pretty comprehensive search committee that includes educators, secretary, a para. We have administrators and teachers on board and we've really broken it down to kind of a three-part series. So everybody on the search committee will be looking at and vetting all of the applicants and determining who will come to the first round of interviews. Then there will be a second round that includes a performance task and then a third final round. So August 7th is the final deadline for applicants. So we are continuing to alert, and that's part of CADE's job, is to make sure that this gets out to all around the state, all around the nation, even in the international baccalaureate world. So that we will hopefully have a really good talent pool. There may be some people right from within our district and then beyond our district. So that's what we're, you know, counting on. So very excited about this. She's also running focus groups next week, as you know, and that information has been sent out. I'll be sending a reminder, probably on Parent Square, to families to sign up this week. Right, this week. And she's also going to be taking the survey results, so I'm hoping the community has really taken time to fill out the survey. Because all of that work will be put together so that we have a leadership profile for the new principal of Fitch High School, which will help the committee and guide our work. So that's where we are. The timeline, the real, the real work is going to be hopefully to have someone in place by end of September, early October, if all the stars are aligned. And Dr. Phil Piazza will be stationed over at the high school. We have a tremendous admin team over there of assistant principals and they really are the boots on the ground and know how the school operates and how to get a year started. But having him there as a thought partner and being available to help guide anything and then of course, me as his wingman, woman, whenever need be, you know, I will be also paying a lot of attention to our high school and making sure things are running smoothly.
So is this in lieu of having an interim principal?
Yes.
This is to, so that you will be, so you'll be principal, basically an interim principal and assistant superintendent and chief bottle washer and all the other things? Okay.
Yep. I think it made them feel really confident. You know, I'm confident in them, our assistant principals, as is Phil, but I think this is just having that extra arm, having that boots on the ground. Right. Jay, do you have your hand raised? Or is it just that the cursor is right on your square?
My hand is not raised.
Okay, all right. It just, I, that's what I thought, but I didn't want to be the person that ignored you.
All right, thank you.
The other question was the funding source and the funding source comes from the superintendent's budget 2312 under professional services. So we do have funds allocated for such work.
Is there any questions about that? And to know that, once we conclude this meeting, we'll be going into our own focus group with Mary online, I assume. Okay. All right, we're going to move on to the business manager's report. I believe that that is going to be Lori helping us out.
Lori and I, we're going to work together here on this. Hello, friend, how are you?
Hi, everybody. So Susan, do you want me to start or you want to start?
The first is the object code summary for FY '24, now that we've done our first full month, so to speak, with our new budget. Look how much money we have left. So we actually looked at it together and we looked at last year at the same time and found that we were absolutely on trend with past history. So that was very good news. And we looked at each of the buckets and I, I think I'll just let Lori speak, that, you know, you see that in every area there is, you know, still the majority of the budget left. I hope so. Did you want to add to that?
Yeah, and I would just add that, you know, for the month's expenses, there was nothing unusual that came up. The purchase orders all looked in line with prior year's expenses and everything seemed to be, you know, on trend with a normal month of July.
I know that our bid list was not able to go out until the beginning of July to be paid for and encumbered. So that was something, so there were some supply costs because we were so close at the end of the year that we held off to pay for the beginning of this year. And then there were, I think you saw some continued increases in fuel costs and that kind of thing for this month.
That's correct.
So we're watching, we're monitoring that ever so closely as those prices have gone up.
Any questions about this year's object code? All right, hearing none, let's move on. So then could you, there was a request to get information about, we were so, I think we were at zero for the end. And so I think that there was a question about like how we got there and what funds did we use? Jay, I don't know if you can help me with language, because I, as a social worker, I don't do well with the money end of the wording. I understand money, but.
Yeah, I was curious about, you know, the fourth quarter transfers, where we were over and where we were short. So this, this report kind of, you know, lays that out.
Right. And I had sent that to you. You can see that there were several areas where we were actually under budget, but there were several areas like purchase services, property services, and supplies where we were over. And I think I had explained that at the end. We were really monitoring that last month ever so carefully. We were coming in the last couple of months with that $32,000 remaining. And so it was really tight. We knew it would be tight. We had Ken at that time, so he was working right side by side to make sure that we were coming in very carefully. So some were over, some were under, but it did come out to a zero balance. Now sometimes the encumbered funds aren't all spent and so there was the question of what happens then? Well, if there were additional funds left over after we had had our audit and gone through that time period, then those funds would be returned to the Town of Groton. So if there is any overage, that's what would happen.
And I think you just said this, but we would not be giving anything to OPEB because we had no money. Is that correct?
Not at this point. I don't know if, if there were those additional funds, if there's that opportunity, that's something I'd have to talk to John Byrd about.
Okay.
Yeah, Susan, we can double check on that, but my understanding is, once we close the year at a zero balance, we wouldn't be able to transfer funds to OPEB because all that's left are the encumbrances.
Right.
And those expenses have to, to pay any expenses, they'd have to align to the encumbrances, but we can double check on that.
Right. Thank you. Any, any questions? Jay?
Yeah, actually, I have quite a few. I'm just going to hit a couple of the highlights. So I noticed that we came in over budget on the tutoring. And I'm just concerned because, you know, I know we're also using our ESSR funds for the tutoring. Obviously, there's a great need there and I'm just wondering how that's going to impact next year's budget. And I have similar questions about, you know, on those same lines about transportation, electricity, diesel fuel. I haven't been able to sit down with last year versus next year's budget to see whether those were, were increased to take, but do you see any, any issues there that we weren't aware of when, when that budget was drafted?
Well, as you know, these budgets are drafted like a full year and a half before we actually start to expend them sometimes. And so we did notice the impact of inflation on last year's budget. And we had actually thought about that in preparing this year's budget to make sure that we had increases in this year's budget to take care of that. But those, those prices continue to go up and we're just not so certain what's going to happen. Like electricity went way up and then it's come down a little bit. So, you know, we're just monitoring that and being really careful with those things that we have a little more control over.
So, my, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just going to mention, Jay, in your question related to the tutor expenses, we are monitoring some small grants to assist us with some tutoring costs. So we are currently evaluating a couple of smaller grants that would help with those expenses.
Okay. Now in terms of, I know the, the electric costs are locked in under contract, but unfortunately it differs by school. The contracts obviously started at different times. But do we have a, a good handle now on being able to project those costs? Or do we have contracts that are expiring in the upcoming year? Do you know offhand or, if not, you know, we can certainly go back to that.
I'd have to look into that.
Okay.
For you and get back to you.
Maybe we could discuss that at, yeah, maybe we could discuss that at finance because, you know, that's been very volatile. And I know we use multiple companies and they're all on different, different expiration dates. The other thing is, were we able to lock in any contracts on diesel?
I believe we did before Ken went. I know Sam is here, if you want to speak to that, Sam.
I didn't get Jay's part, Ken before he left, but he was locking in with the power of the fuel cost. That should be taken care of. But we'll, again, look at that a little more closely to report at the next facility.
Thank you. Jay, any more questions?
Uh, no, that's it. Thank you very much. And maybe we can, we can discuss this more at finance next week.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we are going to move on to the insurance report.
Yeah, I will share, there, there's no updated insurance report yet. We're waiting for June claim report to arrive. We're anticipating it to arrive next week. Takes a little bit longer at the end of the year. It'll be our wrap-up for the end of the plan year for June 30 claims. So we should have that update for the next meeting.
We have to say though, this year really was really in line with what we've been seeing, that you typically see us, the actual costs coming below the budgeted cost for most of the first half of the year. And I think that has to do with the HSA and, and people meeting their, you know, obligations. And then you see, we saw a spike in February and March where actual costs were above the budget. And now they've kind of evened out like with, with the budgeted cost. So it's, it's been a benefit to us, I think, wouldn't you say Lori, the way that it has showcased?
Yes, I agree.
Jay?
And I know that Lori and Ken really looked at this account very, very carefully to make sure we came in for the so-called soft landing. But I do want to point out that while we have come in under budget, that there's currently a surplus, there, there are, there's also additional funds in the reserve over and above. This is what has contributed during the current year. But there's still money in the reserve. I don't know, Lori, if you have that off the top of your head, but again, that's something we could look at next week maybe.
Yeah, we can certainly take a look at it. I know there, there was a, a point where we had drawn it down a little bit, so we can certainly reevaluate that. Once we get our June 30 claims, then I think we'll have a better sense as to where the reserve stands.
Okay. I just, I know we were talking about, when we were going through the budget cycle, we were looking at, you know, the reserve and how much that would be prudent to use toward the operating cycle. I don't want there to be any confusion, but that's all that's left in the reserve. That's just the current year's contribution to the reserve.
That's right.
So, all right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Matthew?
I'm looking at, I understand we're waiting for June, but just looking at the year-to-date shows that we are $725,000 of variance. I'm understanding that to be, that that's the amount of unexpended funds at this point?
It is, but it is not, that's not the, that's not the budget number. That is Anthem's projected claim number. So just so that there's no confusion, it's not necessarily the budget number, but what Anthem projected for us.
Let's stipulate for a minute, because I don't, we don't have the real numbers. Let's stipulate for a minute that the June figure was identical to the May figure. It's not going to happen, but just stipulate that. Would that, in terms of the math, would that mean that we've, we would have $675,000 below Anthem's projection? Anthem's projection?
That would be correct. And then we would certainly compare that to what we had budgeted and see where we land for the reserve.
So how, I'm, I'm trying to get myself up to speed to, for future times. How are we to understand the difference between this variance, which is an Anthem projection, and our budget for the year? I mean, let, let's say we came in the, the same figure for June as, as we had for May. Would that leave us theoretically $675,000, which we would either return to the town or put into OPEB? Or, I'm really, as you can tell, quite unclear.
Yeah, I understand, Matthew, that the, the difference is, is that Anthem provides a projection for us, and which we use in the budgeting process. So their report, this report basically identifies our expenses by month and what Anthem projected we would spend. They do a, a very complex actuarial calculation. This is then fed into the budget report, and then there's a comparison, comparison done, actual to budget as part of the object code summary. So that is, that is the place where we would see how we, how, how the claims performed against what we had budgeted as, as organization, as the district, as the Board of Education. So the numbers, the surplus here you see may not, and, and does not necessarily translate to a budget surplus, because the budget number is not always what Anthem budgets for us, because they tend to be ultra-conservative. And we do our own analysis and come up with a recommendation for the board.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, once we have the June figure here, and we have both the variance, which was the Anthem projection, and we will have compared it to a budgetary figure, will at that point next month know whether we have a deficit, a wash, or excess funds to be returned to the town or applied to OPEB?
That, correct, other than they wouldn't necessarily be returned to the town, they would go into the reserve account.
That's right. It goes into the reserve account.
The town's reserve account?
No, ours. This is a healthcare corridor.
Okay, so this is, got it, got it. Thank you very much for that distinction.
No, I appreciate the conversation. Jay?
Yeah, just, I don't know if this helps or not, but, so we've been fortunate that there is typically a, excess funds that continue to build in that reserve. And that's why I've said it's important to prudently use those reserve funds from previous periods toward other budget items. So, as you said, it doesn't go back to the town. We prudently use it to fund items in the budget going forward, once we know the reserve is adequate.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'm going to, any other questions? I will then move us to buildings and grounds. Thank you, Lori, for, for manning, or, excuse me, personing the ship between human resource and the business manager. I really, the district is really very lucky to have you in your oversight, but thank you for your hard efforts.
You're welcome. My pleasure. Thanks, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
So, sorry, Dr. Kennedy left already, but he found out that we had a little bit of extra time, so we're assisting Dr. Kennedy with some of his projects regarding IT, cameras and security projects that are going on presently. So, that's one item that we're working on. I did meet with the contractor this morning at Northeast Academy regarding the curtain drain that we're doing over there. For those who may not know, we had some humidity problems within the building many, a few years ago, and we've been mitigating that problem by using our heating system along with our air conditioning system. So, that has been taking care of the problem, but again, doing our due diligence, we were able to get a CIP project for drainage, so we're starting with one section of that. And having met with the contractor, he's putting it in his schedule, he's gonna let me know in the next couple of days when I'm gonna start that. Also, at Northeast Academy, had the HVAC duct work cleaned. We did that about four years ago, again, in the cycle recommendations regarding the duct work at that school and also at Catherine Kolnaski. So, having completed it at Northeast, we will be moving on to Catherine Kolnaski in August to do tho, that duct work as well, before the teachers and staff get back to the building. Also prepped some area for the principal, Principal Chaney's storage unit that he's gonna have over there at the building. Also met with the, an architect, with our architect at SLAM, and we have a plan to reconfigure part of the office in the building to add an additional office space of, to give some privacy to somebody that's gonna be working in the office there. And along with dividing the music room into two spaces so that they can have their keyboards in one section and the rest of the class on the opposite side of this wall that we'll be constructing there. So that plan's been done, and we'll be hopefully getting that started very shortly. We did select contractor for the Groton Middle School Pergola project, and I'm waiting, waiting to schedule on that presently. So, that we, we had come in on Friday afternoon. We've been doing lots of moving, there's still lots of classrooms that are moving, as well as other departments maybe, or some moving from one building to the next, or from one floor to the next in these buildings. I did want to mention, I, I don't know if, it was in a public meeting that we mentioned that our food service department was, had a request from the state to assist the Norwich Food Service Department that they, I guess you would say eliminated. So, Ernie and his team, he got some, some of his staff to volunteer their time to come in, well, paid, but volunteered to come in and assist with that project, and they've been feeding the Norwich kids with the summer project, summer food projects as well. This is of no, it's at no cost to the Groton taxpayer or, or to the board. This is federal and state funding that will take care of these things, so. I, I believe he's also assisting New London a bit presently as well.
Wow.
So, other than that, if you have any questions?
Can I, I do have a question around the project at Fitch with the sewer project. Has that been completed?
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, the sewer project at Fitch High School was completed. It took just a little over a week for them to complete that area.
Wow.
Right on budget. Actually, there's a little bit of money left, but I wouldn't count on, I, I don't count that little bit of money, it wasn't enough to...
Jay and Beverly?
I'm sorry, I did have to step away for a quick minute, but I know I sound like a broken record. Is there any update on the solar panel project and the field lighting project?
Yeah, the, the field lights have all been submitted to the town. We have approvals on that, and we're awaiting delivery of materials. That looks like we would probably install the posts, the light posts sometime late August, maybe early September, if everything comes in on time. And we're pretty much at the same stage regarding the solar for the, for the middle school. In addition to that, I think we spoke at, at your last meeting, Jay, about the potential for some other solar projects at both Mystic River and Fitch High School to do some parking lot, car top...
Got it.
In, in the parking lots, roofs over the, some of the parking spaces. So that is, we're looking at that closely to see whether that will, will pan out, so.
Sam, I didn't hear you. What did you say your project was at the Groton Middle School that you're working on?
I, I think the first project that I mentioned was the Pergola project, which is an outdoor classroom space that will go adjacent to the existing patio just outside the art room. So, it will add some additional space there, and it'll actually be covered. Won't be totally waterproof, but if it's raining, the kids could actually be out there if the wind isn't blowing too.
That was one of the last things we were able to purchase with our MSAP grant, which magnetized Cutler and Westside, and we were able to bring to the new Groton Middle School. So, the staff is very excited about that.
Is that the one you were looking for?
Yes, thank you, Sam.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Oh, Jay?
Yeah, so I just wanted to say, thank you. I know this is a very busy time for your department, Sam, catching up on things over the summer. And a big shout-out to, to you and Ernie and his crew for not only operating all the sites in town for the summer meals, but, but also reaching out to Norwich. And I texted Sam one day, and I said, "Call me back unless you're at the beach." Well, he wasn't at the beach, but he was working at Eastern Point Beach. So, he's everywhere all summer. Thank you.
That's right, and while they are serving food to kids in Norwich, he is still running the concession at the beach, although he isn't there every day. He is there delivering foods and stuff on weekends, et cetera. And the one weekend that he was away in Colorado on, on a food service convention, I was the lucky one to get up at five on Saturday and Sunday mornings to get the stuff down to the beach so that Ms. Watson and the others could have their hot dogs and hamburgers down there at the beach.
Any other questions for Sam?
Sam, I, I was positively startled, startled in a positive way. I understood you two have said that we're investigating a covering, using a solar array that would cover the part of the parking area at the two schools, did I understand?
Yes, at both Mystic River and the high school.
Rock on.
If you've been to California lately, you see them in, in all the schools and, and a lot of businesses as well, and here it would serve two purposes. It would not only provide some electricity, but it might keep the snow off of some of their cars, so maybe, maybe we can stay a little later when it starts snowing.
Yeah, there you go.
It's very wise using air rights.
All right, we are going to move on, because we do have someone doing, meeting with us at 7:15. I will not stop the conversation, however. The committee report policy?
We didn't meet in July.
Okay.
But I'll have something to say later.
I bet you do have a policy that we are going to be looking at. And curriculum is also on hiatus? Finance and facilities, Jay?
We, we did not meet this month, but we do meet next week.
Okay, thank you. Communication?
We did not have a quorum for most of the meeting, and so when we had the quorum, we just looked over some of our strategies to implement what we hope will be passed in the communication plan. Phil, would you like to talk about how you would see rolling out this information to the various schools?
We just talked, we were talking about if, if all goes well this evening, how we'd roll that out, and, and we just discussed getting the plan out to, to the principals to get them familiar with it, begin to make plans as to what role they're gonna play in helping achieve the goals that the committee has set out in the plan. And, and making that part of the conversation as we start setting, building goals and principals' personal goals. So that, those would be the logical next steps. We'll continue that conversation as to what to do after tonight, again, if all goes well. But we just started that conversation tonight.
It, it goes in the same way with the PTO, it's rolling it out in the sense of, this is what we imagine, what can we do for you, what would you like? And then we will figure out what we can do.
Right.
Okay, I've just seen if, if they had sent me anything from Learn. Sorry, it looked like I was looking at my phone, because I was. Negotiations, we are continuing on in tomorrow. We are currently in negotiations with our paraeducators. Learn, I don't see anything from Rita. She was not able to make it, she was still visiting family. Town and city RTM Board of Ed liaison did not meet over the summer. Same with the AJSA GEA. Groton Scholarship, Liz is not here to report. Athletic fields?
Have not met.
Trails?
We meet in September.
Library?
I went to the library board meeting last week. Two pieces. First of all, we'd asked how One Card was going. They explained that the Rising Seniors will be totally, totally functional, as I understood it. We've had a technical glitch, and Jennifer and the chair of the library board wanted to give a special thank you to Dr. Kennedy for allowing his staff or empowering his staff to actually help write the code. We've got two different systems, and they don't want a handshake, but Clint's on it, so we're gonna have that. The second was, the public library has a list of books that they recommend to their readers. And our school librarians have a list that we recommend to our various school leaders. So, we discussed at the library meeting whether it would be useful to have the list of the public library recommendations appear in some of our schools, and the list of the school recommendations appear in the public library. So, I'm not sure how that goes into the system. Falls in your court, Susan?
Okay, we can do that. That's part of communications.
I thought so.
That's kinda cool. And the permanent school building committee, is there anything new?
Has not met in a while.
Okay. And then, are the educational opportunities for military children, that's a twice a year, and you've already reported in on that?
Right. We usually, we meet in October and April.
Okay. So I'll look forward to hearing that, then. And so, action items is the consent agenda, which is all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Points of clarification will be allowed. I will take a motion for the consent agenda?
So, so moved.
Can I have a second? All those, all, any discussion? The discussion that I would have, Susan, is that we would love to have Seth's, all of his supplies that he has gotten, so that we could actually say thank you in a public way for the hiking club.
Okay.
I think that would be kinda cool.
So, any donations to the hiking club?
Yeah, I mean, they mentioned quite a bit of stuff that had happened. Okay. If there's no other further discussion, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Abstain? That motion has carried. We are now into old business. Matthew, would you please read the motion for number one, please?
I'd be delighted. I move that we vote affirmatively on second reading of Policy P 6146.1, examination and grading.
Can I have a second to that, please?
Second.
All right, discussion. Andrea?
Yes, it came to my attention after we already had the motion to do this. And what happened was, I looked again at the second paragraph, which, which talks about smarter balance assessment, the SAT, and the third, the third, pardon me, state testing. And I, I'm requesting that we amend this, so that we change the wording from being specific in what test the, the students will take, because they change, and I don't think it's a good idea to have policy spend time on something that is, is going to change. And this, what I'm proposing, is going to say, to say the same thing as, as the second paragraph, but it will take out the, the specific testing, and it will align itself with the special education, a language that appears below. And here's, here's my, my request. The board will comply with state law with regards to testing, to testing required by the State Board of Education. That says exactly the same thing. It just doesn't specify which test. It says whatever test they want us to do, that's what we'll do.
My recommendation was to put it in regulations and in the handbook, so parents would know specifically what the state tests are each year, so that that would be more current information, that they would be the ones who'd need that information.
And what about the, since the regulations come under your jurisdiction?
Yeah, I would do that.
Although we have to approve those, and we have to, they have to align with our thinking.
They have to align with policy.
Yes. So, when the tests change and the will, will we have to spend time on that? So when the tests change, and the will, will we have to spend time on that in policy? Or will that just be pro forma?
Regulations, handbook, that's all the staff work that we do, that we, you know, make sure that we are aligned to the policy that has been approved by the board.
Okay.
And that that's the process that we go through.
Okay, so what I would say is, we don't vote on that. Is that correct?
No, you don't have to vote on that.
But what I would say is that you would bring that to the policy meeting, just to apprise us of...
You could cer, I could certainly do that.
All right. Very well.
Any other question about, or discussion about her changes?
So are we voting on the changes now, or are we going to continue this until Susan comes back to the policy committee?
No, we're going to go ahead with it tonight. We just have to find out from Mrs. Johnson what we, what the pergola do, you know.
So you're, we're voting the amendment now?
Yeah, voting the policy as she has amended it with her language.
Do we need to have an amendment made, seconded, and then go through that process, Kim?
Ms. Joan, can you think about that? But I'm also going to answer Bev's, ask for Bev's question.
Thank you. When we talk about grades, do we give letter grades or all are grades, number grades? Or do we give both? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Is there something specific in the policy that you see that you're questioning?
No, I just see, I just see the word grades. So I was wondering, is it both letter grades and numerical grades that you're talking about?
Well, grading can take on lots of different ways in the middle school and high school. It's pretty traditional, where there are both numbers and letters. In the elementary, we have standard-based reporting for report cards that are aligned to the standards that we're measuring. So the grades can look differently. This is really, I think, more about the examination and getting the data back from the state, and the various ways that we are able to assess our students per the state law.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Joan?
Is Andrea moving the motion with the amendment? Is that the idea?
So the question is, is that she would like to have a change in the policy?
Yes.
And so that needs to go through an amendment process. Is that correct?
Yes. She can move the motion if the amendment, oh, and what she said.
Okay, so let's do that, and then you can walk me through the rest, because I never can remember that. Bev, do you still have more questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
No, absolutely. So if you could offer an amendment to speak to what you are changing it to, that would be great.
So in other words, you want me to read this?
Yes, as an amendment.
Okay, so...
I amend.
I amend. The policy P 6146.1, to read in this way. The board will comply with state law with regard to testing required by the State Board of Education.
Can I have a second to the amendment?
I'll second that.
I've got Matthew. Any more discussion on this?
Would you accept a modification on your amendment that you were referring to the final, to the paragraph under the subheader statewide and district-wide assessment?
That's not it. It's this one.
You're doing it?
I'm sorry, it's this one. This has been changed to this. This is the one we're voting on.
Okay, then we're talking about paragraph three?
I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay, so just to specify that this amendment is regarding paragraph three.
All right. Okay. So Ms. Joan, then we can vote on this?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, my love. Okay, all those in favor of the amendment that's on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Abstain? Okay, that, that motion has carried. Now, do I go back to the original?
You didn't put a motion on the board for the original motion.
Can you say that one more time, my friend?
Original motion. Did not get a first or a second for the original motion that's in the agenda.
I didn't hear. I didn't hear what you said, Mrs. Johnson.
She said you did not get a first or a second from the original motion on the agenda.
I, Matthew made the first. You're right, we didn't get a second. So can I have a second to the original motion on the floor?
I'll second it.
I've got Andrea with the second. So Ms. Joan, are we, are we good, or do I need to vote?
You need to vote that as amended.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you for helping me out. All right, so all those in favor of, to approve the Policy P 6146.1, examination slash grading as a second reading as amended, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Abstain? That motion has carried. Thank you, Ms. Joan. I don't mean to be so clunky.
That's all right.
Willie, would you be willing to read, under new business, the motion, number one?
Motion to approve Groton Public Schools' communication plan.
Can I please have a second?
Second.
I have Andrea who seconded it. I did it, Ms. Joan. All right, so this is something that we actually spent a lot of time in our last meeting, in our committee of the whole, going through the communication plan. It was an incredible document. And once again, the board would like to thank Rebecca for your efforts in making this plan run so smoothly. So thank you very much. Are there any other questions about the communication plan? Once again, I'm not trying to rush us through. We have had a full meeting on, on this. All right, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion to approve the Groton Public School Communication Plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Abstain? That motion has carried. Matthew, to your committee and to Rebecca, thank you so much for that work.
Yeah, Phil, you can thank Phil, too.
Yeah, a little bit, Phil.
Dr. Piazza was here, too.
Yeah, we'll do a little. All right, so thank you. Bev, do you have anything for communication?
No, I don't.
Jay?
No, I don't.
William?
There's been communications in regards to the principal and then, you know, potential candidates for new principal. Really, everybody that's contacted me says visibility is so important in that new principal, the previous principal wasn't very visible, and they really appreciate the visibility. Several of them mentioned one of the current vice principals as their hope to get the new position.
Any other communications?
No, that's it.
Matthew?
I've got a communication about the Channel 19 audibility, problems with that, and said I'd bring it to the board.
Have you brought it to, like, Clint and also to Marcus to talk to him about that?
No, but I've chatted with Mark several times informally.
All right, just making sure, I want, like, if it needs to get fixed, talking to...
I have noticed that, too, and shared that with them as well. Yeah, I have noticed it.
Andrea?
I had dinner with a former Cutler Middle School student and his wife, and I just wanted the, the former staff at Cutler Middle to know that he said that he and his classmates that he is in touch with talk about how fruitful an experience and wonderful it was at Cutler. And I thought that the staff would like to know that.
That's kind of cool. All right, I have no, just the communications that you guys have been hearing from me, that's about evaluations and stuff, and retreats. And so there is the, the future meeting dates, where that's kind of self-explanatory. What's not on here is, like, next, is in August. Nope, that's all on. All right, and do we have anyone who has a suggested agenda item?
When are we completing the evaluation? Have we fixed the date yet?
I have proposed, there was an email that went out this afternoon about...
I just hadn't seen it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. And, oh, yeah. All right, hearing no other agenda items?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Meeting has adjourned. Jay and Bev, please say aye on. We do have Mary with us.